This already are.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time in six oh two and I call the city council meeting of September fifth, twenty twenty three. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Larissa?
Here.
Councilmember Phil? Councilmember Leland?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Christian Green?
Here.
Mayor Laddie?
Here.
And Councilmember Grant is asked.
At this time, we have the, uh, it's optional, pledge allegiance or movement of silence. Uh, if anybody would like to, please, let me decide.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to it regardless, which spans one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would, uh, ask about the agendas. Is there anything on the agenda that anybody would like to change?
Yes, we would like to add, Commissioner Fiedler is here and would like to give an update on the, uh, Community Justice Center.
And that would come right after the city administrative report?
That would be ideal, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes we would like to see with the agenda? Uh, then I would entertain a motion with both chairs, please.
Oh, can we add one other thing? Yes, actually.
Nope, sorry.
Oh, no, this is. Uh, we actually would like our streets department manager, Tony Medina, to just give an update. We've been doing some street paving and just give an update on where we are with that. And maybe some guidance on, uh, budget or priorities for rest of our budget.
Then it's okay if we'll do that immediately after the administrative report?
Sure.
And then, uh, Commissioner Fiedler after that?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I would, yeah, yeah, entertain a motion.
Three moves to approve the attendance attended. Thomas, seconds.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All are in favor. At this time, housekeeping matters. Anything anybody would like to speak about before we get rolling? I do want to mention very quickly, uh, that, that yesterday was the last day for the two lead build museums that we managed, the Tabor Home and the House with the Eye. Uh, at the Tabor Home, we had eight hundred and sixty seven visitors, uh, this summer with donations of fourteen hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, with the, um, the House with the Eye, we had six hundred and ninety one visitors with twelve hundred and seventy three dollars in donation. So just wanna, you know, give you kind of a quick update now that the, the museum season for us is over.
Quick question on House with the Eye, since this is the second season that we've had it, 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 that sounds like more visitors and more donations than last year?
It was fewer.
Oh, it was?
Uh, last year was seven hundred and ninety nine visitors.
We thought we had, oh, just about eight hundred dollars in donations last year.
I, I would have to look that up. I don't remember exactly. That, that could be correct. I didn't actually, you know, check that out. Any other housekeeping matters? Okay, thank you. At this time, uh, we would love to hear from our door in public. If anybody would like to speak on, uh, any agenda, any items that are not on the agenda, uh, please come up, introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak to city council. That would include people on Zoom. If you would like to speak to city council, please unmute and introduce yourself. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we have the consent agenda. This is the approval of the August fifteenth minutes. Does anybody have anything in those minutes that, uh, they think need to be changed? Okay, hearing none, then I would entertain a motion.
Leland moves to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, we have the city administrative report.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to pass along some data, uh, that we received from the tourism panel, the twenty twenty two visitor data. Uh, the state released the numbers for twenty twenty two. And, uh, this is summarized by, uh, Adam Charman said, uh, there's a chart, and if you look at the spending for Lake County, if you were to flatten the chart from twenty twenty, the twenty twenty dip and twenty twenty one spike were precisely where we should be in twenty twenty two regarding the growth trajectory, um, since about two thousand fifteen sixteen. This is seven percent annualized growth for Lake County since two thousand fifteen, outpacing the five percent for the state, uh, and the travel regions of the same country. So that is good news. Um, in the good news category, uh, the community center, uh, we are on track for closing on September fourteenth. Uh, the one, two conditions we had conditioned the sale on first was, uh, the title, uh, clear title, and we received the title, and we had no objections to the title. And we also, um, received the appraisal. The, um, property appraised at eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, so that is a non-issue. So those are the only two things we had continuously on. So the closing is set for four P M. here, um, at city hall. And, uh, the public is invited. Uh, we will probably be doing cake and a little celebration around, uh, four thirty. And graciously, the seller of the property is, um, hosting the celebration as often as cake for the cake and beverages.
What time is that?
Well, so the closing's at four P M. and we just told, I mean, if you don't want to sit there and watch me sign documents, I just, you just want the cake show up around four twenty or four thirty. And Christian, I want to get with you about getting that word out to the public.
Sure.
Uh, I, I've been, I have received confirmation that we can do it at city hall at that time, but. Uh, in other good news, we received the data for the highway user tax fund. Um, this is state data that we get for essentially our portion, uh, the highway user tax fund. So we received our projections for twenty twenty four. This is would be our budget for twenty twenty four. And we will receive a hundred and twenty two thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars and ninety seven cents, which is slightly over last year, which was about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So that's good, a little bit better earning for us. Uh, we had several positions that we are seeking to fill. As you know, police officer that has been posted and is out on, on the street and is a newspaper finance director, administrative assistant. Just want to let you know those are posted, and we have received some applications uh, for those, and people that I think are, um, pretty well qualified. So that is great news. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, you mentioned, I think you meant police chief.
Yes.
Do you have the process started for the committee?
Yeah, so thank you for the council members who have given me, uh, folks who might be interested. I need to contact them and, uh, get that committee form. The first thing is to get it posted. So it took a little while for me to get our H R consulting firm on board, but they are on board and they're working with the job descriptions for these positions and the, um, for post basis. So we're hoping to get that out as well and, uh, streets work their position.
Any other questions for the city administrator? Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Tony's there.
I'm just really, we'll just begin to start with all what's been done with paving so far, and I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look at this. And so, so the projected on, uh, projects that we were working on, uh, we actually have. We have done the Eighth Street, the one hundred block, the two hundred block, those are done now. Um, it's just still in the process of getting with the paper to, uh, get the lines painted and everything. There were some other projects that we were talking about for lines throughout town. We'll be working on that. We did get done the rotor milling upon the six hundred block of East Twelfth, Ash and Orange Street were also done. So that's almost three quarters of the block right there. Got that done. Um, my greater, uh, Tyler and the other guys were just, we were, we're real short right now. We're actually three positions down right now, one medical, one on leave, and, uh, one who decided to be more, more somewhere else. Um, we do have the other area up here, what we call the triangle, which is the top of Second Street with Ash and Over. It's a whole area up on the top. And we did complete that also with the rotor mill. So we did quite a bit of that within the small group of people that I do have. Uh, we've got several other projects that we wanted to look at, and right now we're just waiting to get all the total bills in of what we've done so far, so we know what's left in our budget. And then we'll have a better idea. I've got an idea of, we were looking at between, uh, Sixth Street and Eighth Street on James itself. Uh, that's kind of a smaller area. And depending what our budget looks like after this is all done, this was fairly expensive. Eighth Street was a very wide and long blocks. So that would have been pretty good chunked out of our budget. Uh, the rotor mill, it's just stockpile that we've had over the years. That one's just manpower and forty to fifty hours just on those two. So right now, right now, that's what we're working on. There's a couple other spots. We get some work done on it. They did, um, uh, park some work over there. They filled in there. And leveled everything out. Um, the other one that was done was the top of Seventh Street, the six hundred block, but that one came out pretty decent as well. So quite a bit of paving, which has been done. And we've still got several other locations of that view. This would be the James Street, and this would be the third street from bottom of Third Street to McWhitby. Uh, that one's kind of kind of bad. It's what they call alligators. So if we can tear that one out this year, it would be nice. If not, that can be a project for next summer. That could be one of our priorities for next year. Any questions?
I was just gonna refresh everybody's memory. So we put aside two hundred thousand dollars in a paving fund this year, and what would you estimate? Would how close are we to the two hundred spending, two hundred thousand this year?
I was estimating around a hundred and fifty. That our park bill, uh, split on Seventh Street actually came in lower than what we expected. So we might have an additional ten to fifteen thousand.
So it turns out that was the correct number, right?
I believe it was after I spoke to, uh, Cody today.
Excellent.
He explained it, and it did make more sense.
That's fantastic. Good.
And just to give perspective, uh, Tony and I were talking yesterday or a year ago, I can't remember, but it's about the, the asphalt alone for Eighth Street was, what, seventy one?
It turned out to be eighty one.
Eighty one thousand.
They did, uh, the first leveling, the first strip that could go down the middle to level out a whole lot of entire roller coaster, and then they put down the, the pavement on top of that, so it leveled out pretty good.
Do you know what you were paying a ton?
Ninety nine.
That's what we paid last year. Good, okay, thank you.
ACA is really good about maintaining that, so they.
Excellent. Cause the going rate was like a hundred and twelve or something like that, and they gave us a, a good deal.
Yeah, I think they gave us last year's rate because of the amount that we have been using, and then the paving company uses them regularly in this area, so. He maintains a good relationship with them as well.
Good. One thing I've mentioned to Tony is if we have paving projects that can get done this year that we go over that budget, I would, you know, uh, ask him to sub, come to city council and ask for that difference in order to get as much paving done as we possibly can in any given year. Uh, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Commissioner Fiedler. Community Justice Center.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thanks for adding some time to the agenda. Is this okay in terms of, no, I don't know. Um, so yeah, I just thought, um, it's been over a year since the July twenty two city council decision to be a part of the Justice Center project. Um, uh, and just sort of be good to give an update, uh, in particular, having, you know, been on sort of a year of additional planning for that project. The county has a work session on October nineteenth where we're discussing this um, and other big capital projects for consideration for the twenty four project. Uh, so again, information's coming. And just wanted to sort of, yeah, refresh everyone's memory, and also there's been some turnover in city council, police chief. Uh, so again, it would be good to give an update. So yeah, so July, already July twenty two, um, uh, I think it was Shannon's first session, uh, city council um, voted to be, uh, a part of the project, which meant including the, um, police department space in that building um, over two thousand square feet of course space, plus of course, you know, the co-location in there, um, broader systems. Um, and that was a price capped five million dollar contribution, uh, to be a part of that building. Um, out of, uh, what it happened was a forty five million dollar, um, estimated total construction cost, not just hard costs, but complete, you know, turnkey project. Uh, so including design, uh, furniture fixtures, again, like move in, all, all included costs. Um, that also included municipal court. Um, that July decision included not a full I G A, but a pretty detailed term sheet for what the I G A of the sort of financial contribution, um, and what you're getting for that money would be. Um, so just to refresh you again, it's been over a year since then. Um, so after that July, we, uh, got pricing, and as we all know, construction costs have been twenty to thirty percent higher. Uh, this project was no exception. And total construction, uh, uh, total all-in costs, um, were coming pretty much around sixty million, uh, for this project.
That was for diminished footprint also, right?
Yes, we had already thought we had been doing a good job with, so that had already lost the district attorney and probation offices out of that space. Um, so, you know, hence the one year, uh, sort of hiatus to see if we could open broad. Um, so yeah, let me add just again, to refresh like what, what sort of plan A in that whole building was gonna be, and then what we've been working on with some other country pathways that we'll discuss in October. So Plan A, you know, the overview of the whole building was kind of like three big chunks, uh, detention. So the county jail is and has been shut. Um, we just have some temporary holding cells in there. Um, so that's a big part, um, you know, obviously the cells, but also all the support functions like intake, visitation units, mental health hall, medical clinic, or, uh, mainway, uh, inside the, laundry, kitchen, um, yes, full jail. Um, the second chunk is courts. So we currently have one state of the art nineteen fifty five courtroom. Um, and, uh, you know, this was a two court, so that when we have a jury trial, all other court proceedings aren't thrown cold for weeks or months. Uh, you know, modern's pure prisoner transport, being able to keep witnesses, defendants, victims separate, um, jury separate, which we currently can't do in the current buildings. We're open, open hallways. Um, and then the third was law enforcement, so co-locating, uh, city police and sheriff's office, as well as dispatch and emergency management. So again, those three big chunks. Um, and then, um, again, a big lack in the current courthouse is there's really no public space. There's no place to sit down. There's no place to have a private confidential discussion with your private attorney, with human services, with victims advocates, you know. There, there, there's just no, no space, um, uh, other than in the hallway or out on front, and people literally have conversations with their attorneys on the front lawn. My office video is totally ideas. So that really is Plan A that we've been pursuing this last year is to keep trying to find cost savings, hope that some profit comes off the contractor market. Um, and, um, we will get, uh, again, sort of cost saved, uh, uh, pricing and design, uh, in that October timeframe. Plan B, oh, I should say, and also this is a new build on the Harrison and Monroe side, so the old, um, smelter. Now, A, you know, I've been giving it a side pile, uh, kind of by, is it the circle A? I don't remember which category it is.
Circle K.
Uh, sort of up between Harrison and Toledo and Monroe to, to just not search the K. Uh, so Plan B that we're looking at is can we phase those three chunks and sort of spread the cost out over time, so can we build courts, law enforcement, jail in, you know, not all at once, but still end up with that same plan. So looking, so structurally what that involves and what the, um, you know, how the costs can be spread out over time. And then Plan C, we have, uh, architecture, um, and mechanical firms, uh, looking at the current nineteen fifty five courthouse, just to see again, can we put some of these functions, again, of detention, courts, law enforcement, dispatch? Can we renovate and expand on that site? We do have parking space. We have an annex building down by the post office. So we're looking at structurally what's possible, the mechanicals, utility services, how high can we build, and our city code. Um, and we'll have that reported for that same October nineteen. So again, that's where we are, you know, those are the sort of contingency plans, um, we're looking at. And then, of course, uh, we've been looking at our revenue and wealth, you know. Forty five million, but the project already seen what incredible lift and financial risk. Sixty million feels worse. Um, but, you know, we're taking a hard look, and we have a very integral on our, kind of, core county expenses, revenues, so, you know. We'll be bringing that to the table as part of our regular twenty four budget process. Um, so that was it. I'm happy to take questions or sort of like collect questions to report back. Um, I don't want to take up, uh, too much time, but.
Are there any grants available for construction of a Justice Center?
So we have, um, four million from a federal earmark, we secured. Um, that also, or the three point six thing, um, and we also secured three years of operating budget for sort of a justice system navigator staff, uh, so that there would be both front desk people in that building, um, to help people know where to go, and when they, you know, when they're leaving the building, you know, get them hooked up with whatever services or referrals they, you know, it is relevant to them, as well as some policy support to try to integrate, uh, citizens' experience with the justice system. So there's also an underfunded courts program. Uh, we had a two million grant from them that we had to release back when we pulled the plug, but we've been invited to reapply on a contingency basis. The problem with that grant is that they, it's very not like the school best grant. The school best grant, you get more fifty percent match, sometimes sixty percent, but you know the total amount upfront. The underfunded courts, you have to apply through your project, so you're not, you're not, you're not given a guaranteed total amount. So you might end up with four or six or eight, but you don't know that going there. Uh, and then we're scouring everything we can for other, other grants, like ground field stuff. Um, and so we're, we're, we are looking, and actually our county grant, um, writer position just started today.
Oh, excellent.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So yeah, we've been, we've been looking. Um, there's, you know, there's some potentially broader dispatch and emergency management aspects. There might be some with Ripken, um, but it's actually surprising part to find money for these functions, even though they're essentially state imposed on county taxpayers.
I assume, um, that always gets me in trouble. Um, I assume that as, as, if you're looking at, at, uh, sequencing the building, that you build a jail first.
I, I think that is the consensus, because that feels like the most broken of the three functions, you know, again.
Okay.
I didn't run for office to build a jail, but I, that feels the most broken. But then, I mean, the other thing we're looking at is not just the cost of facing, I mean, it's also like the operations, she's like, if just the jails over there, then you're transporting folks across town, I mean, across town, like a few blocks, but still, like, it could tie up staff. We just need to make sure we understand what we're getting into.
But it's good to be transported to Lincoln County.
It sure is, yeah. Yeah, uh, uh, although we need to be careful, because if, if a deputy has to sit with them for the whole day while court takes its merry time, then maybe we're actually trying not to stand, you know, more staff than we pay. Like, it's not just a five-minute run and drop off. Uh, because in the new build, there'd actually be, uh, a small holding cell in the courts, so you can bring someone and leave them. We don't have that right now. There's nowhere to leave them over here.
Got it. Any other questions for Commissioner Fiedler?
I just have a few. Is there a time limitation on spending that, um, congressionally directed funding?
We have not asked that question back monthly on the theory of don't ask the question you don't want to get answered to. Um, if we delay any further, we will ask that. We've, uh, we lost the underfunded courts grant. Um, I think congressional earmarks certainly, I think you have to, I, 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 our, our assumption is that the, delaying a year or two doesn't lose it, but radically changing the scope of the building, we're going to western. Because we broke in the application that we deliver certain things, so we have to deliver the sort of Plan A building.
And then on the timeframe, so you have a work session, and then what is, what is the plan after that?
So I, I mean, I think the, the plan is that we will make a decision, even if by default in my four to twenty four budget, so we will either include money to, you know, we'll, we'll include money to proceed with one of those plans in our twenty four budget and sort of remite moving forward with that or, or we won't and continue to.
You think you'll know in time with the twenty four budget?
Yes.
Okay, wow, that's good.
Yeah, no, well, that's written very, very explicitly in the contract for the revisiting the nineteen fifty five building. And, um, and, and also very much so in scope, um, you know, known, known date, so, so everyone knows they need to be ready to present. And then, you know, then we have, you know, two, two months here with A to, to absorb all that, ask all questions to put what is decided into the.
Will you let us know for purpose of our, because we, we have the same, you know, so we have made a financial commitment to a community, the new Community Justice Center, but not, you know, a renovation of the other building. So what we need, you know, the budget back for us is, I think if I remember correctly, about two hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars a year. It depends on what your, your, uh, what your loan looks like or how you're gonna do that, but.
Yeah, and my reflection of the term sheet is that we wrote in that the city had a lot of flexibility in terms of how they wanted to structure that by, and over time, it would just use the same, it, it wouldn't be a longer term of payment than the county did its finance, same, the same interest rate.
Got you.
That's what we wrote in the term sheet. And, and, and yeah, I mean, we'll, I mean, a part of my idea is to maybe where the October end, we will share everything we have, and sort of at least that we have any initial meeting or, you know. And if it's really clear that some options just aren't viable, um, as soon as we know that, we'll relay that.
So then after your budgeting session and decision on which pathway to take, next year would be all the RFQs and RFPs, or do you have an idea of?
We actually already have the general contract.
Okay.
Contract. So, you know, that's all part of our, as they need to know as soon as possible this year, so that they can have the right crew and staff and subs.
So do you foresee like something happening next year?
Yes, I mean, if, I mean, under Plan A, you know, then, I mean, yeah, we still have to finish getting through the city permitting.
Yeah.
Um, but I think at this point, we have, we have a. Um, but I think at this point we have, we have a hundred percent construction document prepared. Um, so, and we've already been through, uh, quite a long, but like the first hearing or preliminary hearing with the city. And that quite a lot of back and forth. So I, I think it's realistic to be able to break ground in twenty-four.
Any other questions?
I have to, I'm under Plan A only. Even the phasing would require, I think, some more. We don't have hundred percent construction documents for the phasing. Um, for the based approach, we definitely don't have them. Like if we were to take path C. And try to make do with the current building or expand on that side, we don't have anything beyond, you know. Basically, Octo Napkin, you know, schematics. So that would for sure push into twenty-five at best.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jay. Appreciate it. At this time, we have a presentation about the Red Bull Seven, um, and that is included in your package.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce ourselves, our vision for the site, the work done to date and the opportunities that we see by. Working with the city through potential annexation to this project. My name is Kyle Lynch. I'm a land planner with ETJ Design out of Boulder, Colorado. We're a design firm with sixty years of experience in Colorado communities and mountain towns. We do a variety of work, but we have a focus and passion for community design. Uh, we feel vested interest for the communities that we work in and we're particularly excited about, uh, the site that we'll be discussing. Tonight, we understand its importance and, uh, relationship with the town as well as, uh, how it creates a threshold in the mountain open space. Uh, we're working with Ledville Seven, represented by Bob Armstrong. He's joined us, uh, virtually this evening.
How you doing, folks? Thank you very much for your time.
As well as working with Tetra Tech, represented by Chris Durle.
All right. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Chris Durle. I'm a civil engineer with Tetra Tech. Uh, my office is located in Frisco, uh, so we're, uh, close by. Um, our work has focused in the, uh, mountain region of Colorado and, uh, we've done a variety of projects throughout the mountains. And, uh, we've, uh, we're, uh, happy to assist Bob and the DTJ team, uh, providing civil engineering services on this site.
Kyle, before you get started, let me just, uh, real quick, um, thank Chafin and Lori for their, all their time working with us. And even prior to that, Ann Schneider, uh, on the county side, um. And as you will reiterate in this presentation, we're very excited about the opportunity to work with the council. And the town and try to bring a product to, um, the community that, uh, works well for everyone in, in the form of some. Workforce, forced housing, deed restricted lots, um, we're just excited about taking the next steps to. Further talk about how we can work that out together.
Yes, thanks, Bob. We know this is a high growth site and it's a well-understood and well-used site. So we're gonna look at site context that most of the people in this room are already familiar with. And what we see from opportunities and constraints, uh, with development constraints, but as well as opportunities for community design and community growth. So, uh, the site location overlay on the county land use plan. Uh, this is located just east, but not adjacent to the city limits, the Front John County Road Three. Uh, through a couple of years of coordination with the county on the project, uh, it was actually recommended to us to. Pursue annexation discussions with the city. After reviewing that, we agreed and thought that there was a lot of potential there to. Make a better connection to the city and, um, get a cohesive community out of that. So the constraint lying near but not adjacent to the county is that we're, um. Bible for flagpole annexation, but understand that there's a critical missing piece there from the current city grid. This future county, county land use plan, uh, is owned as a future residential. So we're consistent with that aspect of it with a, uh, relationship to the city. You can see a little bit better relationship of. How we're near but not adjacent to the city limit as well as the urban grid that's established and planned for. Uh, the future land uses on the eastern part of the city town. Excuse me, town side residential. We see that, understand that and feel like we can provide an opportunity to tie into, continue that appropriately. Uh, the site of the county context currently is owned, you are urban residential. We understand it's, uh, used primarily as open space, informal trails. We do want to relay that, uh, members of this Lego seven development team also own the eight acre parcel immediately. To the east of this that, uh, contain the power lines. There's no. Development plans for that parcel at this time as that is owned by him. And, uh, but we, we do have flexibility to see if there's any future desires. For incorporation into preservation or open space or either the city or the county. On that. Excuse me. The specific site context that we found. Most intriguing pertaining to our property boundary is that while the majority of this property is made up of the hillside, I believe Fairview Hill. We do have a few smaller select low lying areas that are still within this property's boundary. Those are located, uh, page right and lower part of the page. This is where we see our opportunity to. Make a stronger connection to the city because these lower areas have a stronger. Uh, connection to the potential city grid. They're smaller, they're flatter. They don't have to deal with this hillside development. So between these lower flatter areas, the skeber hillside development and the hilltops, we see, um, we see two distinct. Uh, basically land characteristics coming out of this, the hillside, which is the majority of the site and these roughly three, three acre. Uh, smaller parcels on the periphery of the site. Uh, also depicted is the annexation, like hold, we would like considered, uh. Willingness to do for a lot more information and figure out what needs to be done to pursue annexation, but from initial. Uh, analysis, it looks like there's a reasonable route for annexation through county road three as a light pole in this site. Additionally, uh, we envision this site being accessed two ways. Off of County Road Three through the adjacent eight acre parcel, which is under the developer's control. As well as an extension of East Twelve Street, which, uh, has undergone initial coordination with the adjacent landlord. Who is, uh, open to, uh, the idea of extending the grid through this property. A few site photos that just kind of helped drive home what we're looking at, this hillside development, uh, as well as, uh, views over the town. We understand this is a highly visible site, highly used site. And the characteristics that are there today are a guiding principle of, uh, the design strategy. If this project should feel like it has the same characteristics when it's fully developed as it does today. So balancing the hillside characteristics. With the need to respond to a future city grid are the two driving factors of, uh, our, I guess, methodology. We do want to share with you the work done to date. We want to relay where we are in this stage of the project. We have done two years worth of effort and coordination with the county. Uh, we want to relay where we are, what that looks like and why, um. We really want to cooperate, be transparent, but we also want to relay that we're not tied down to this. So we understand that. Development with the city through annexation is going to look differently than it did with the county. So the things that are shown on this plan, the specifics, the details, we're open to, uh, revisions, discussions, negotiations on. What this needs to look like if it's part of the city as opposed to, uh, a county parcel development. So as previously discussed, we see two general characteristics, the hillside development and the, uh, lower smaller pockets. Uh, this conceptual site plan responds to those two, uh, those two characteristics. The lower impact development on the hillside, the northern and western side of the plan. This is currently envisioned with fifty to eighty foot wide lots, uh, consistent with what will be our one conventional residential city zoning. We feel this is appropriate because it allows us to, uh, best respond to the topography of the land, the vegetation, the trees. This conceptual, uh, site plan identifies maximum building envelopes. So. All of the green that we're seeing behind the lots, uh, we are in bulk areas. That's very feasible for pres- preservation and it's intentionally located along the primary bridge line. With the understanding of how this project will be visible from the, uh, city. So providing a plan that works with the topography, street drive wise, and allows us to tuck home sites. Into this so that it still feels like the hillside that it is today. Additionally, the three small inclining areas on the south and west of the site, so page right in the lower area. These have potential to connect to the expanded city grid, not immediately adjacent to the grid. Uh, but we feel, uh, that through coordination with the city and adjacent landowners. There's an opportunity there to expand this grid and make this feel like a cohesively designed. Community, these smaller development pockets that we've identified as planning areas on the plan. Will have a lot of flexibility for the develop, developers standpoint. They're currently shown as. Thirty-eight foot wide lots. Uh, the total of all three PAs is adding up to forty-two lots. And, uh, this is consistent with, uh, our two traditional residential zoning. Uh, but again, we have flexibility to discuss, uh, desired product size, product type. Uh, we want to have a better understanding of what the city's housing needs are and what we can do to help respond to that. Uh, additionally, the development team can commit to ten to twenty percent of the project. To the deed restricted lots, uh, that's eleven to twenty-two of the total lots. And we're open to term coordination, uh, initial qualifier conversations have been around. A hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty percent AMI. Then, uh, that's, that's what the developer is willing to commit to right off the bat. Uh, we're more than happy to discuss increased, uh, deed restrictions, the terms or, um. Whatever that workforce housing needs to look like and, uh, what that could look like in coordination with the city regarding. Uh, whatever sort of developer incentives are available. Or credits or development, or development fee coordination, uh, that ten to twenty percent is what they feel like they can do off the bat and still. Get this project to work.
Kyle, you're at about twelve minutes now. Wrap up as soon as you can, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, initial phasing for this project is the sixty-five hillside development lots and PA one, the far right. Planning area. We feel like the, there's better opportunity to put PA two and PA three. In a future phase that will allow us to better work with the city to understand what those housing needs are and. Uh, additionally, work with adjacent landowners. This is a bird's eye of the plan with relation to the city, just to better communicate that we understand there's potential for a future city grid connection. It's just not our land, it's not our property, but we're going to work with the city and adjacent landowners to figure out what that needs to look like. This additionally shows why we feel like it's important for this project to look as a bulk room and. Break that transition to this mountain open space, uh, that we're seeing at the top of the page. And, uh, we're both in the spirit of coordination and full transparency, this is the preliminary sketch and. Uh, draft plan was put together for county coordination. We have put thought into this. Uh, utility wise, capacity wise, but we're not tied to any of this. We can, uh, work with the city to. Figure out what the, those best needs are. While working with Lego Housing Authority, um, product type, deed restrictions and terms. Uh, any updates to city or county goals, we'd be happy to fully understand. And, uh, we have a understanding and commitment to the recreation that's in place. Uh, connection of East Twelve Street to open space. We have a connection to the mineral belt trail that we plan on utilizing as well as more itself open space corridors. Those green lines on this page are all public trails that we feel are feasible and, uh, vital for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? All right, so over.
I have comments, which bears their questions necessarily. I mean, right off the bat, um. I'm thinking specifically for the AMI, that needing to discuss the number of units. I mean, one twenty percent AMI is a. Pretty high number in terms of how much income, a family of four, for example, would be making hundred and four thousand dollars a year, which. Understandably isn't really that much in terms of having two kids, but at the same time. Uh, for what we locally pay, it is a lot, um, comparing a teacher who's been working in our school district for ten to eleven years. Only makes fifty-one thousand dollars. So it's roughly two teachers pays, um, for two kids. So I, I mean, we're shooting pretty high numbers out there for a relatively low amount of units in, um. That we're getting back ten to twenty. I mean, if we're shooting for those higher AMIs, a little bit on the higher side of income, not just missing middle. Then I, I feel like we would have to talk more seriously about, um, some more units allocated towards that. Additionally, those units are kind of set off to the side rather than interspersed with the other units. Uh, that is something that, um, at the very least I have very, um, strong feelings about. And I think the units should always be intertwined with any developments and our communities as that creates the most equitable, um. Practices towards, uh, those units and maintaining those units. Right here.
Any quote?
Yes, I, you mentioned utilities, which of course are not city owned. I imagine that some discussion has already been had with Porkville and Lego sanitation?
Yes, a preliminary discussion we had through, uh, sketch plan coordination as a, as a county submittal. Uh, working towards the preliminary flat stage before that was, we were recommended to. Uh, first to or discuss any annexation. So, yeah, uh. Beginning conversations have been had, uh, the district and sanitation company, uh, we've confirmed, uh, capacity. I believe that may, those discussions may be close to a year old, but we did have, uh, the required bill serves and proof of capacity, um. In coordination with the county.
And then, um, Chafin, just referring back to our meeting with plan and zoning. Um, last week, I know the focus of that meeting was more on. Open lots within the city limits for the median infill, um, but we had discussed. Open lots within the city limits for the median infill, um but we had discussed. Taking areas that were not within the city, um like just individual lots and doing. Info guidelines that were outside of the historic district. Um would this. Potentially be something that um we could apply out of district, out of historic district info guidelines on?
Uh you you could apply and overlay district uh guidelines. To a property that was already within state limits. So. If if the same annexation, you know, just uh hypothetical situation were to be effective six months or a year from now. And then those guidelines were going to be adopted a year and a half or two years from now, uh then that that zoning overlay could be applied. Um to um all pro- to all properties within that boundary in state limits.
And were the city to annex this area, then. It would go through the same procedure with SIA's and PUD's. And developer agreements that we also discussed.
Yes, what what technically how this would work, would there there's certain ways that that someone can. A property can get annexed into a city. This pathway is being proposed and discussed, it would be a petition. And I would assume that the city council would place terms and conditions upon that petition. So so that would be a an an annexation agreement, so some large way development agreement. So it is. Annexation in this case would be a completely discretionary action by the city council. So terms and conditions could be applied upon that, um which would all be written into an annexation agreement.
So how did that work? Cause I came on after the rail yard area had been. Is that, was there an annexation agreement before we went down the, I think I jumped in right when the.
There there was not. We we started out pretty divey, but. We did an annexation as our first step uh before we went to the PUD. And sort of usual approval agreement.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have uh, one of the things that concerns me as I look at this is traffic flow. We're talking about Twelfth Street, um and then it tees into Highway twenty four, Poplar. Have have any conversations taken place with CDOT regarding traffic studies? Cause CDOT is going to require a traffic study. Before they give you access onto Highway twenty four. And the and then Seventh Street's a different issue because it doesn't go all the way through. It does, but it goes goes to a place where again, there'll be no traffic control. Uh to get in and out of Seventh Street, so. Has that been discussed with CDOT?
No, I don't believe any coordination with CDOT has occurred at this time, um. Because we have not gone through more coordination than just initial sketch plan coordination, we have not got into traffic studies or anything with that.
I would suggest you start having a conversation at least so so you know what to expect. And it almost doesn't matter whether it was city or county, you're gonna have the same issue with CDOT. Uh the second thing is. What, oh.
Uh the next one. Good point, thank you.
Yeah, environmental concerns, you know, that hillside was was mine. And we know, at least I know, anecdote. Uh and it's why I understand that there may be actual mines up on that hillside. So what what are the conversations been? Those should have been run in with the EPA. Because it's part of a superfund site. And and then with uh Bureau of Reclaim- Reclamation in mind. Uh cause if there are any mining sites out there, what what is the plan through the VOR for reclamation?
Chris, are they?
Go ahead, Kyle.
Hi Kyle, would you like, this is Chris, would you like me to try to answer that a little bit?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, Chris, go ahead. This is Bob. Yeah, go ahead.
So uh to date, so Tetra Tech has done quite a bit of uh mining reclamation work uh in the area. We actually helped with the rail yard development as well. Um we uh and and Cal Gulch uh as well through the EPA. Um we've done some preliminary onsite investigations to determine uh the lead levels in the soil on the site, so we have some preliminary information there. Um so we know there's gonna be some remediation required. Um we also have been talking to the project team about uh geophysical study to look at. We've done overlays of the historic mining maps and things like that, but our next step. Once uh development uh moves forward a little bit further and some more detailed engineering studies like geotechnical engineering and things like that can be done. We're gonna, we're gonna evaluate that as well to see um if there are any elements on site that uh will require some mitigation as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh and kind of back to Christian's point, you talked about PA two and PA three being kind of the last thing to happen. And uh you know, just the first thing that makes me a little nervous. Uh that that any affordable housing or even the missing middle housing. Will be the last thing that you do rather than being at the front of of the project, so. Um that's just me thinking out loud about. Um what what the feasibility is and what feasibility of an agreement, a long-term agreement would be if if suddenly. We get down that road and and that doesn't happen, so.
Uh like Kyle said earlier, all of this, all of this is flexible. Um you know, that's originally. PA one, two, and three, we're not in our, we're we're all phase two in our original submission to the county. Through discussions with Chapin and Lori, we've moved PA one in. We're open to even looking at that further, is you know, whatever makes sense for all of us. So. Is again, as Kyle said, nothing here is cast in stone. Um we just. Are hoping to get the opportunity to discuss this further with y'all and see how we can make it a benefit. For the community and all involved.
And I appreciate that. I've stood all along. I don't love up on the front end, you have the annexation, but I'm willing to listen. If it's in the best interest of our community, city and county, um and and there are wins in this for for housing especially. Uh that I'm willing to at least consider. Um uh but I could tell you without without knowing more about. What CDOT's take on this is and what uh EPA. And VORs uh take on on this is and and what you would plan to do about that. I mean, I just have a hard time going forward. That's that's, I'm just speaking to myself, not all city council. And we can, you know, we'll hear more from city councils as we go forward.
I guess my feeling is annexation is the only way the city has any say.
I I we can, I can't hear what you're saying.
Annexation is the only way the city would have any say. If it if it is developed within the county, it just happens.
Correct, exactly. So so that's that's in large part correct is if. The right now, the land uh rests within the county and if there's a request to annex to the city. Then the question is, why would the city want to do that? Why and you know, the applet or the the uh presentation has identified, you know, continuation of the city grid and some other. You know, uh points about uh that it should be actually our city. Plan, not the county plan and how it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. But it's true. I mean, that's the only way we would have the ability to ask for certain things and. Uh Chayvin and I have, you know, talked with Kyle and and some of the team and we've explained that. Uh we have heard from the community and the community group meetings that. The things of concern, of course, for us and our community, affordable housing. How does this address the need for affordable housing? Um the mayor's comment about traffic, how is traffic managed and and dealt with? Uh the environmental concerns, obviously, uh and the access to open space. One of the things I wanted to bring up was that we've asked, also asked the developer, um while. If we cannot impose a real estate transfer tax under Tabor, because we didn't have one before Tabor passed. Uh we can have them voluntarily have a real estate transfer tax if we've asked for that. And that could be a income, you know, that we could put towards affordable housing. So it's it's it points like that, you're exactly right, is that. We would have more control over it and we could ask for. For things that would be beneficial for the community, any exchange for the annexation within the city.
Only remaining concern is is um well. Yes.
Uh I just wanna ask one uh question of the of the design team. Could could you speak to um vertical construction versus subdivision improvements? And vacant lots? Could you speak that a little more? Yes, so the original intent of this project when it began a couple of years ago. This Leadville Seven development team uh had no interest or desire to do the vertical construction, the home construction. And so that's, that's kind of two-folded. It allows for a variety of builders or housing to take place, but it also doesn't give us any actual units. Over the last year, we've we've heard you, we understand the concern is for attainable workforce housing now. And as part of this initial commitment to that uh ten to twenty percent minimum deed restrictions, the development team. Uh although not home builders, they are willing to commit to pursuing the vertical construction of those units and. Uh begin discussions with local builders. Um continue work with the Leadville Housing Authority and create that initial commitment to go vertical for um the. Uh workforce housing. Uh Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the. The thought for the non-workforce housing is just to have uh lots for sale that could interest uh. Uh local builder, uh select local builders for individuals.
I mean, that's the thought right now, but you know, that, like I said, we're flexible. Um. As I indicated, I think to Chapin and Lori in one of our previous discussions, one of my partners in this deal is uh. One of the largest affordable housing builders in the country, the Marion Group out of uh Kentucky. So we can figure out how to get it done and um. You're you're correct, initially that was not our approach. But as we visited and talked more with folks, we understood the importance of it for the community and. We're, you know, we understand. You know, to get this project moving forward, it's give and take and we need to make that happen and. And the, one of the first questions and comments, uh I heard loud and clear about the the AMI and um. You know, how that was pretty strong. Again, like you said, Kyle, earlier. It's all up for discussion and um this is just our first stab at it.
Yep, okay. Um Tracy, do you have any questions?
Um not right now, no, I don't, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, so the the design team, the development team has, you know, given a presentation to to loop in the council on where they're at, but. If this were to mo- move forward, staff would suggest the next step would be a work session. Uh we, the next available work session, we we have a space in three weeks that tends to be blocked out, so that is. Um I'm just kinda asking, cause the the they they didn't ask, but uh does the council um want to see this again? And if so, is that in work session format?
I don't have a little problem with that. Again, I I would I would reiterate that that I need to know a lot more about environmental and traffic concerns. Uh before. The 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 work session would be worthwhile to me, just I'm just speaking for me right now. I don't know, where the city council can decide for yourself.
Well, those concerns would exist whether they pursue this through the county or the city. So I'm gonna fall back on my.
Right, but what we're talking about is the possibility of city annexation plan. And so with that on the table. Then regardless of who it comes to, you're right, those are the same concerns, but I would wanna know from a city perspective. What we're actually talking about.
I would be happy to continue the conversations. I've already expressed my concerns surrounding. Uh the affordable housing issue and my thoughts on this, as long as we can work something out to kind of. Uh meet some of those concerns or hopefully I'll um have to continue talking on that.
Was that the twenty sixth?
Yes, okay.
We already have, so that would be adding it to the goal setting work session, which is already scheduled.
Pretty sure it's gonna be one or the other.
Well, I would have to attend.
Yep, and so the season of work sessions, I agree, begins. Yeah, do we wanna have a conversation, you know, block out an hour for this conversation? I think the twenty sixth.
But again, we already have the goal setting scheduled for the twenty sixth and I. I just wanna try and keep a little bit to that schedule, like I can look at my calendar, but. I wanted to have the goal setting done before, or we start getting into budget discussions.
We do October tenth? Or is there?
For kind of budget.
As our, yeah, we're already hitting, but the season will never.
Right, because you're gonna see probably a proposed budget by the. Uh October seventeenth meeting, so I need goal setting happening well before that.
So what about a work session October tenth before the budget flies off hot off the presses?
The Leadville Seven discussion on the tenth or?
Yeah.
Yes, I think.
I would still have to attend.
Tracy, ten's okay for you?
Yeah, the tenth is fine.
Thank you very much, okay. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. We look forward to discussing what this project and bringing to this community.
Be as soon as you can bring us about ten.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we have the Leadville County Regional Housing Authority, an August update.
And well again. I am Jenny Williams, Leadville County Regional Housing Authority, I'd like to speak to tonight. Uh I just wanted to give an update on what we're working on. Um for those that don't know, a lot of you have been part of all of these conversations, so I'm trying to be quite ready. Um so we have been working for the last year and a half. On housing strategies for affordable housing incentives to go after goal funding for the incentives for us. Uh we were awarded the grant and now we're scrambling because the land that we had initially had granted from affordable housing. And was not going to be usable in the other rooms. So we are in negotiations, hoping to have. We are very productive, so it's meeting on Monday. Um they're gonna have a meeting on the eleventh, hoping to get that property connected soon. On the hospital also, I've sent a contact to them. And it's now being reviewed by county engineering and the hospital. So hopefully those projects can move forward. Um I did just get word from. EPA, which has invented the phase one and the phase two studies that um that will follow this tomorrow. Uh that they were higher than expected levels of lead and arsenic on site, so we will be looking at looking at the fourth floor. Um which is, I think, extended. Um but again, across time. So one of the main reasons for my visit with you today is to give you an idea of what the uh forecast for funding. Looks like and what we will be looking to ask you for. When we initially formed the Regional Housing Authority, the city and county, we came up with a very uh bare bones. Uh budget, just to get things out of the running and um we are still trying to work our way through. What the actual budget will be. Um I don't know if, and can you possibly pull up the. Was the slides? Yeah, can you just, that would be great. Um. But now things are actually happening. We've applied a lot of grants, we're gonna work on um a type of administration grant for. Uh maybe a meat assessment, before the side of the house, and we will be uh being matched up. Before the site has enough grants, we will be, uh, being matched at fifty percent. Uh, the incentives grant, we were awarded initially one point one that the state paid, the city can be coming up three hundred thousand dollars in long-term match for that. Um, now that the sites have changed, we changed our budget a little bit and it was expected to continue to change because everyone changes every single day. Um, prices are going up, um, and so we'll figure that out. Um, we had to go under contract again, we have the lien letter. We were so impressed by the work that all of you've done, um, to bring forward the housing authority in such a short amount of time, along with all the other strategies that were adopted that day. And another community brought out and made the work nice and successful. So that money is being utilized to secure a five-year apartment house. Um, the county has dedicated their remaining art bunch funds, which was seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to go towards housing. And it'll be shared between DHS existing housing programs and housing authority in this purpose. Um, so initially, the city had agreed to dedicate two hundred and forty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three. That includes my position, it also includes being paid through two A, also leftover two A funding, another seven thousand from the grant match of a hundred thousand dollars. And, um, we, we lost three thousand, so there's a hundred and ninety still outstanding from that. Um, the county has dedicated some operating funding of twenty-six thousand. Um, some additional programming for big share and next year a hundred thousand dollars. And the grant match, the initial grant match of two hundred thousand dollars. And then that, uh, as I talked about, that a little funding has been added as well. Some of the things that are running, Jim, is I am one person and this is a big, big job. I, uh, the best work for the town. Um, and so if you like the hats, the staff, you can do that. Um, of course, that's gonna be more like, um, the additional grant match for the new proposed sites is three hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars. That includes the tap fees for the water and the sewer and then the needs assessment to two thousand five hundred. Um, the supplemental grant award, um, the match for that is two hundred and seventy-two thousand. So we're looking at funding that we did not prepare for, uh, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and four thousand dollars. So I'm coming to you today, ask the city to, to continue to support us when they consider, um, increasing the hands to, to increase your, your contribution with a three hundred thousand dollars. Um, if we can go to the next slide, um, just to give you a heads up on what the market is doing. So the blue slide, or the, I'm trying to, the line, the second one from the top is twenty twenty-three. The median home sale price for August was five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, so we're still up there. Uh, it's not as sad as it was last year. Interest rates have really slowed the market down. Um, buyers are not able to afford, as you know, she said, couldn't have them faster. Um, so it'll be interesting to see how this year continues. Um, the next slide please. So on the next slide, it indicates, um, some of our, our, our challenges and our objectives that we've met. We've done a lot of new agendas and life are the things that we are still working on right now. We're hoping to get out the community guidelines at the next meeting. Um, because we don't have the sites committed to housing authority and that finalized, we need to, um, you know, have that checked out as well. And as soon as we get that taken care of, then we can put it out for good for the infrastructure fees. We did get an extension from Vola, so we're not looking, um, at an April twenty twenty-four deadline for spending this money. We now have until twenty twenty-five, which still seems like it's gonna be in the end by. Um, our long-term objective, what we're hoping to do on the two sites, we're hoping to build twenty affordable housing units. That's down considerably from what we initially wanted to do. Um, but I think for a random housing authority, it's a good start. Uh, we also wanna plan back additional building sites. And we wanna start looking at Harrison Volta as a possibility for a big housing development. And that's gonna require a lot of master planning in terms of survey, engineering and planning. And then the last slide please. So, um, as we look at the market, local people can't afford to purchase here. Um, this house, as you might, um, be familiar with, is a cross from the pizza place. And it was originally listed at five fifty, it's now brought to four ninety-nine. And we're seeing, you know, drops in market we haven't seen in years. Uh, again, and that has helped the new initiatives. Um, but as even at five hundred thousand dollars, a local family simply cannot afford that. Um, so we are hoping to be able to bring something back to the community that locals can't hear. And that's all I have for today.
So to be clear, your request at this point is zero thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four budget, is that what I'm understanding?
I, you know, it would be great, but I would not know your planning if I'm a twenty-four budget. Um, it would be great to see something that's coming now. Um, again, as we created this, we have, um, not a ton of time to put together a budget and it was a two-string budget, so it's not really an operational budget. I'd like to see us hire another person, a supporter, as an example.
I figured my conversation with you either makes perfect sense. Uh, I, I would ask this, the three hundred thousand dollars, is that in, in addition to the two A money? Or is it in addition to all two A money? I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I just, I wanna hear from Lori on this, uh, she's been more closely involved with, uh.
On, on the budget request?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we, it, it, just to refresh your memory, I think I pulled it up last time, um, this issue came up. But, but you know, Jackie's correct, we had, when we signed the IGA for the regional housing authority, we put together a budget and the, um, projected leftover two A money was about seventy thousand dollars. Uh, I sat with, Christie and I actually did some algebra in my office about a week ago. And looking at the two A money that's been collected so far this year, it looks like maybe the leftover two A money would be around a hundred thousand dollars. So for the rest of the, the ask, if it's three hundred thousand dollars, it would basically be, uh, that, if that, the city council wanted to proceed with that, it would have to be money out of the general fund. Because the two A wouldn't, you know, three hundred thousand dollar ask isn't gonna be covered by the leftover two A money. Is basically where we are. Uh, you know, I think, uh, yeah, I, so we, so we have advanced, uh, so far, the housing authority fifty thousand dollars this year and actually asked the county to send me an invoice for the two other things which are, we've committed to, which are Jackie's salary at seventy thousand dollars and then the grant match at a hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know that I've seen those yet.
Right, and so, and then, and then the fifty was supposed to be seventy, so the total outstanding right now would be one naive from what was agreed upon when you're about to the budget.
Fifty will only be seventy updated year because, you know, it has to be collected, you know, but yes.
So the fifty, you know, we paid, you know, maybe it was a great idea, because you have fifty, we projected maybe by the end of the year, the leftover two A money would be about a hundred thousand dollars. Then we've given you about half of that with, I, I actually, and maybe we gave it to you around February, but maybe where we, you know, and, and at the end of the year, we're hoping it's the leftover two A money is about a hundred thousand dollars. So the ask then for three hundred thousand dollars is then would have, the rest of that would have, not of the general.
And I also wanna point out, I think in the first page of that, of that slide, um, business carry numbers for engineers, um, because we're gonna be building and, um, we're gonna have to, um, figure out the gap funding for this private. So if we're, if we're offering Lori AMI, the gap's gonna be higher, interest rates continue to go up, the gap's gonna be higher. If, um, cost of materials goes up, labor goes up, it's all gonna be higher. Um, so these are just wild numbers, you know, based on, um, you know, the annual crack we can get price for sweat foot. And, um, so it's, it's expensive to do this, this is not true. Um, so this is, this is, this is the first ask.
I'm having a little trouble because you're using a lot of descriptive terms like scary numbers and I wanna hire some people and I'm having trouble translating that into this sort of sparse budget numbers that are given here. So, um, so first, I imagine that the scary numbers you're talking about are the rapid escalation for the projected numbers for professional services. What, uh, I guess what I would really like is a little more detail, um, on a spreadsheet that shows some of the numbers that you have in the front, like this is how much is, is from this grant and just is how much we expect in match. Because I, I'm having trouble putting these numbers into this spreadsheet to, for them to make sense.
First things to look at is this spreadsheet. This is just from, this is just from Laura's door, it's anger back in. Um, this is just bringing in the horizontal, you know, so.
So is that, I mean, what's under the professional services expenditures in the other?
Yeah, so is this six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in addition to the grant funding that you have, is what, was going?
Yeah, so this budget will show you down at the bottom, the state's contribution with the global grant, one million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Oh, I see.
And then city and county match. So we initially come in with a county match of three hundred thousand dollars. The city was bringing forward a hundred thousand, the county was bringing forward two hundred thousand. And we didn't include any tap fees in that. So when we looked at the new project, then, uh, these numbers were given to me by my friend, and I'm using the consultant who worked with us in the city and regional housing authority.
Um, I, I, I guess, I, but my problem is I see all these numbers and I see what all these specific things cost. But then what do the numbers on this spreadsheet mean? Where do they come from? And how, what can I add together to come up with the numbers on this sparser spreadsheet?
Yeah, so I can, I can handle the original numbers, they're like, you know, where I.
That'd be great. And then my other, my, I have a couple other questions. My other question is, you say you wanna hire some people, um, what do you need specifically?
So I would love to have some help. Um, I'm having a hard time keeping up with, you know, the, the faucet design for funding from the state, which is great. Um, but, you know, I, I applied for, um, regretful discrepancy spending at this, at a gold conference. I was making that application at midnight. Um, it's, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot to this job, it's a lot bigger than I expected when I started. And, and I guess there's so many parts of it that as we start to build, we're gonna need someone keeping track of what's going on with the global process. So, or somebody reporting for the global grants. Um, that takes time. Um, there's just a lot to this job that takes more than I know.
I understand it, it is a big job. I guess what I'm asking is, do you have a job description or do you have a specific?
Yes, and like I said, we're trying to try and, and look at filming, um, something, you know, towards the morning of the year.
And would that person be full-time? And what would it be out?
Well, that's why I understand that the county's doing some shifting around personnel. So I imagine there's gonna be some space opening up in different places that they currently have leased, so.
Um, unrelated question, I'm sorry, missed in the beginning of your presentation. You mentioned that, you know, the EPA determined that there were higher than anticipated levels of lead and arsenic that would require remediation. In which, um, sites were you referring to?
So that's on the district site, uh, the point nine six acre site, and then also on, um, the hospital lot still standing. So, um, then we also had, um, the county, um, was hoping to contribute, um, a half block on East Eighth Street and there's some ownership questions about that because there's no ongoing line claims. And so we've continued with that, but that's, I mean, I was, we're already in the middle of it and the, um, mine and hers are the main to that, so. I'll find out more, I just got the one, right before I came here, I got a form sent to me now, that we need to talk, so.
And then Laura, I mean, I, you know, is a, it is a very large loss sum to want for the end of the year after most of the fiscal year is already passed. Um, I have, and I understand there's reasons for this, but I also haven't seen any financials since before July. And so I have a trouble wrapping my head around like, we're pretty much four hundred and, like, I don't know, we have one right now. Well, I can tell you, so you presented the sales tax revenue and so far, off the top of my head, I think we're about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars over projected sales tax revenue, um, as of last month. Um, you will have updated financials in your next package because Donna was able to do that for us. Uh, the mayor and I just went over the, um, budget numbers for each of the departments and we're happy to report that I would say all the departments are below budget as of right now, slightly below budget. And I think there was one department that was at budget. I do not believe there are any departments that are.
Understated.
I hope, uh, but that probably is part of it, all the others were very true.
But I know, but there's also been some salary adjustments, you know, that have been since our last financials. To let you know, there, I think, all the departments except for one were below budget. And the other depart, that department was just right on budget for the amount of the year that's been allowed.
We had financials through, um, July of last month. And those were not a hundred, significantly, they were too close, not that I worked on that. So I hope that, uh, we can get August, you know, thirty-first numbers in front.
I guess I'm just thinking like, if, if we're so below budget, but we also have a number of openings, you know, then that's a temporary below budget. Correct.
So, yeah, that's a good, below budget is okay.
I think the one I know, because it sounds like, yes, I know we have this last summer quest, but then there's gonna be on, down, and on.
Uh, you know, the, the reserve, as I see it, is the July thirty-first, uh, in, in, it's a, it's a, it's a, it moves, okay? It's four, four one million. And that's after the eight and nine's purchase, which is, that's, that's where. Well, not yet, but yes. You're, you're absolutely correct.
Some of that is sort of.
You can back that out of there, yeah, no, it, it's, it's, it's a tricky moment for us.
No, it, it just, it's a tricky moment and it, there's a lot that I can't see in front of me and there's these large requests and that makes me uncomfortable.
As it should.
Any other questions for Jackie? I guess, uh, as the chair, Lori, you know, before, I would love to be able to sit down here and stand this a little bit more, because I'm quite, quite unstable. I'm kind of unfamiliar with this one, I don't really know what that person would be doing. And I feel like it's kind of important for at least the city representatives to get a good understanding of what that is. If we're going to be backing budget increase, um, not sure if you've already had these conversations with the county, but, um, at least from my perspective from the city, it would make a lot of sense to start having so many conversations with both of us, um, and maybe at least one at-large member. Um, because it's, I mean, including the purchase of the building using some of the dollar grant funds, it's kind of like, I'm glad we did it, but like, where would the process in that, right? So I, I would love to have a little bit more structure to that and hopefully get a better understanding so I'm better able to represent, um, here at city council what that looks like and get any updates.
As you go through that process, as, as Jamie pointed out, I would really like a breakdown, explanation, this number, because this is the number we're actually, yeah.
Next, we can, if we sell units, if we're, maybe we don't know what we're going to get, if we keep finding it, it's gonna be a rental or for sale, we'll find out after it goes out to bid. Um, so these are all.
And that's where budget versus actuals.
Right, and so, um, the idea is we would, is pre-sell if we're, uh, if we're gonna have four areas, which is, is that a little, a boot, um, you know, some of mine, but I think with interest rates climbing, um, it might be relatively.
I appreciate that, I'll get the free selling and, and gauging interest and, and, and those people who can call. Uh, so I think rentals also make a lot of sense in this field.
Yeah, the needs assessment will, will help us understand that better. As far as the, you know, my, my imagining program, I have a goal, three hundred and fifteen people seeking rentals. Um, and sixty-eight people who have been enlisted in affordable housing, of those sixty-eight. Um, and sixty-eight people who are listed in the board of housing, of those sixty-eight people, I don't know how many of them would actually, you know, follow through. And and we improve, um, but we have a lot of people looking for rentals. So that's gonna be a bigger upfront cost.
Lauren, what what do you feel like our next step in this process on?
Well, so. Yeah, I mean, I I think, uh, I'm hearing that you would like a little more data. Um, on where we are financially, we can do that and also. Um, maybe a little more specifics from Jackie as to position description, salary range, you know.
And and we're gonna work on that this week, so I should have something to do with us.
And I think kind of the breakdown mean for me, um. You know, where the different funding sources are, how they, how they work into this projected amount.
Any other questions for Jackie?
I did wanna announce, um, that we're having a strategic planning. Uh, second, uh, October eleventh, it's gonna be a full day second. We're working with, um, another. Grant program, it's a full grid grant that was also under the same, uh, house called three and the same screen. And so they are helping us to write our P or whatever is appropriate. Uh, for the new assessment, also for the infrastructure that we're gonna be looking for. To these two sites and then also helping us to move forward to the plan, what it is we want to.
Where will that session be going?
That's a great question.
Alright, well, we'll be patient. Jackie, thank you very much. Appreciate your yoga effort.
We were just wondering if Jackie did. At the same time as it sounded like it was all, sounds like it was the same thing.
She morphed into.
Just checking, cause Jackie left the building.
There's got, there are trick or treats free. Burn candy.
Is there an age limit?
Um, so I'm Karen and I work for the Parks Recreation and Open Space Department for the county. And I'm Andrew Bailey, Dr. from the Love Community Program. And we are coming here to request permission to run our, I think this is the third annual on Main Street, Trick or Treat on Main Street, so. Um, we're requesting, um, we're in. Works with City Dot right now, but we're working on getting Harrison Avenue shut down from Eighth Streets to Fourth Streets. Um, like we did last year, um, and we're requesting from twelve to. Four, yeah, both the fours, uh, on. Um, and we plan on serving hopefully up to eight hundred to a thousand trick or treaters. Um, we just want a safe space for the kids to go and kind of have a Halloween experience.
I'd like to add a few things about, um, the opportunity for businesses and organizations to learn to be a part of the best city by. Uh, signing up to host a table, um, along the avenue and that really, last year we had nearly a hundred. Participating business and, uh, local organization, we have a local fire department. Anybody would like to be a part of it? We don't ask for, um, a sponsorship from any of our participants. The only thing we do ask is that we provide blue candy. Um, that's not necessary, that's not a hundred percent necessary to do, um, but like, most of you know. Being involved, trick or treat, we do a fair amount of collecting, um, those cash donations, um, which will then be our second request. Um, tonight, because I think we do request, um, a five hundred dollar, uh, candy stipend from City Council each year. Um, we continue to collect those, uh, physically at Safeway and both office, um, and then also through a QR code.
Did you run out of candy last year?
We did not, because we need several runs for things.
Did we do a five hundred dollar stipend last year?
We did.
And and so was that not added at this point?
You know, it's part of, it 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 goes through a bigger pot that, um, we could run and energy manage, um.
It's not up to date since I haven't seen the bills in the couple of months, but that's. Operating contingency when last I squared it. We could, we could probably.
But I just wonder, I I knew that that you've made some additional runs last year. Um, I thought, this is such a great event. And we did it, uh, two years ago, um, we didn't close down Harrison Avenue. We had crossing dollars and stuff like that, but it was pretty chaotic. And you made the decision between between the, uh, direct department and and Main Street. Uh, to close Harrison Avenue, that worked beautiful. We had a ton of people out there and it was such a nice community there. Um, I really, I really appreciate what you're doing.
I would like to add one thing. This is the, this is the Ben Dixon Village and there's a lot of departments within the city that after collaborating coordinated in street closure. But the E D and we didn't realize that and, uh, we appreciate it so much because. Um, I think the community really responded well and I think, you know, nearly three thousand local community members on the avenue, so a lot.
Yeah, I just want to add into it is, you know, obviously for the kids, but. It was very family involved. Last year, we saw so many families from. People with infants to grandparents and families dressed up together, like it just. It really feel like it brought everybody else.
I saw a lot of people I don't normally see.
Yeah.
In town last year, which was very cool. Tony, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, that the regional permitting person is not going to allow the bypass we used last year. Is that? Correct understanding?
I have not heard that yet.
So I, can I? Yeah, and end of July, we talked to Alan Cloud in one of our. Trick or Treat Street, um, meetings, organizational meetings, uh, he was. Uh, because it was a four-hour close, he does want the Mountain View Drive for heavy traffic instead of trying to get trucks down pine and pop. So we did get. It's because of the four hour, he's okay with the forty-five minutes, thirty to forty-five minutes. Delaying that, but when it becomes more than an hour or two, he wants Mountain View open for the trucks to go all the way around town. Um, he said that he would, he did approve.
Good.
With those.
I I'm wondering, I mean, last year he agreed to just using Poplar to Fourth Street.
Right.
Both ways.
As a two-way street because.
Was that discussed with them or?
We did discuss that, but we also discussed that we did that mainly, he didn't think it would be that long. And pine was closed due to a paving project last year, so we hadn't had Poplar open, so. He wants to go back to what is considered normal detour, which anything over forty-five minutes would be. Mountain View Drive for heavy traffic.
I'm a little disappointed because that worked last year and, uh, and it simplified our life enormously, but. Guess I'll leave it alone. You got it. I can call Alan and check what you think.
You go ahead and do that, leave my name out, please, because we were doing. We really worked on getting this, you know, and getting your blessing on this was pretty important, so it took a while. I'm sorry, Tony and Ken, I am.
It really presents a problem for me.
Can I also just say that that's also been a case with the parades? You, we have not, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the people, but we have to provide safe. Events, whether they be parades, whether they be trick or treat street. I know it takes a lot of manpower and it takes a lot of overtime, but it's the only way to provide a safer dance. And I'm off myself.
Tony, how how is that more difficult for your department?
I'm down on, uh, three people right now. I will probably be down another one or two at that time. We're running into the middle of hunting season and my guy has been working with us all summer long. Expect to be able to put some time on.
But I mean, in terms of like, what is just rookie question? But what, what, what kind of work does that require for the street department with the detours and street courses?
Well, this will take place over the weekend. It'll be a lot of overtime, uh, good. Say everyone that, uh, I have working right now, that's five people. That's a, uh. Times five every hour we have to spend out there and I've figured it out, it's gonna be about six hours. To set up and take down everything that has to be done.
Like signs and things.
And sign, we have to get the signs ready, uh, because they have to be dated, the times have to be put on the signs. They have to be physically put out in all the streets. Not only we're we're gonna have to put down both parking signs down Harrison Avenue, we're gonna have to do the detour off of. Of Fourth Street to Eighth Streets, you gotta do a truck detour all the way around. And setting those up have to be done twelve to twenty-four hours ahead of the event. So that means that we have to set them up on Saturday morning with our ready is, oh, yes, so we're talking. Thirty. Just six hours with five guys, that's what thirty hours overtime.
I know last year you guys had it on Friday, that Friday afternoon, not before the event. I thought that worked really well, was to be kind of crafty.
Uh, I I I'm not as concerned about the amount of our manpower or lack of manpower. I guess my only question would be, is there any chance we could engage Roden Bridge? Uh, in in helping us out with a couple of guys, I just.
That's, uh, something we'd have to talk to Ohio Urban about. Then again, he's been running through the same situation of both.
Is it?
Yeah, the weekend.
Okay, that's, thank you, thank you for the clarification. Yes, chief.
And sir, this impacts the police department as well. Um, any kind of closure on Harrison requires. A police guard and officer posted at the south end of the closure and the north end of the closure. And at the same time, advance your calls for service. For an understated police department, it is an impact.
Yeah, I understand the impact part, but I just, I'm trying to figure out how do we make it work? We're we're we're, we are going to do this. This is important to our community, just how do we make it work?
I guess I work a lot of time. I'm probably gonna be above anyone available at each time.
Uh, that's, uh, that shouldn't happen. That should not happen. Any other questions for, uh? You here for this? Okay. Uh, in which case I would overturn the motion and it would be. There will also be a second motion for the five hundred dollars to come up to the seat.
If we set this year, even.
I don't think they would request it back, uh, but if you make the motion, you use the sound.
Uh, um, Loma Land moves to approve the temporary use permit for Billy County. Recreation and Level Main Street Program to host Trick or Treat Street. Uh, Trick or Treat on Main Street, uh, from one to three P M Sunday. Um, October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, including the request closure of Harrison Avenue. From twelve to four P M with the attached by movements.
On the seconds.
Is there any discussion?
I guess I'm just. I know we want to make it work, but I'm just.
I just want to know what alternatives we could employ.
Well, I I can tell you. Despite what what Laura has said, I'm gonna give out a call because he agreed to that alternate. Bypass, which would, which would make for a great deal less work for the street department. Um, and so I'm at least have the conversation with reminding of what we did last year that worked. That it wasn't a problem and see if he will agree to modify his decision. About doing the the complete route detour run around town. So that that would be mine.
But I'm still concerned about figuring out logistically, uh, regardless of what is supposed to happen. If the reality is that Tony might be the only available person, then obviously it's unreasonable to ask him to fully. Handle these closures.
It would be unreasonable for him to be the only person.
Oh, absolutely, but it, that's, that part to me as a manager is pretty straightforward. I I understand that, but if the reality of the situation is that's not gonna work out, then. I I don't. I don't think you say, well, you know, tough crap, figure it out, I. Without properly then going through the other avenues of making sure that this can work out. With that.
Would it help if I, if I got with a road bridge and saw what they had available for that weekend for that particular?
I think that's a conversation Tony should have. That's the, that's the relationship.
I could contact and talk to him about that too.
I'm happy to be involved in that.
I ran this by my guys.
Yeah.
They're already so tired from this recent month, their immediate answer was, I'm gonna be busy. But that doesn't mean that in two weeks there's gonna be a change of heart and they're gonna be available for that weekend. I look today, they're so tired of it.
This is five weeks from now.
Exactly.
And, uh.
So there is still a possibility that I can get more of the guys coming around.
Gotcha.
It's just, today was not a good day to ask.
I, I understand, yeah.
In addition to your honor, whether they get the bypass on the poplar or not, they still have to put out the no parking signs. They still have to put out the, the street closure signs, the five, six, seven, and eight.
I know.
Yeah, it doesn't change it, no.
Yeah.
I mean, the point is, and and I'm, Tony and and Ken, I've talked about this, there is. We get to a point where there's some event fatigue and that we just wanna balance the interest of having events. Goes off with also understanding that we have a lot of events and we just had a lot of events.
Next year, I would love to start talking more about, uh, the other events that happened during the summer and quick succession during August, because. I mean, this event clearly brings way more to our community than some of those August events ever have, so I. I mean, there has to be some give and take.
We've already had some discussions about what the other events need to contribute so that they're not as much of a string on the city. And you will be seeing that when you see your updated fee schedule in January.
Both in, you know, maybe fee schedule, but also manpower.
Right.
You know, what can they, what can they bring to the table in terms of manpower? Uh, that takes some of the pressure off of us, whether it's security, you know, uh, details or actual people. Uh, that are doing, uh, uh, routing and barriers.
Right, like having some of the larger events, contract out services that they up up till now have expected the city to provide at no cost. And we have provided that, but I have a harder time justifying it when it's for-profit entities versus things that are for our community. I just want to acknowledge that we're in a place where we have event fatigue and we probably need to address that with some of the events that are for profit. Versus the ones that are.
Fully agree.
For our community.
Right. Better than any consideration of doing. Uh, an alternative street.
You know, I think that's something that we can definitely discuss, because I know this was part of topic of discussion last year too. So maybe, you know, depending on what's decided tonight, but. Maybe after this event this year, if it's approved, we can definitely have that conversation on. How much does this really benefit being downtown? What would participation look like if we did it elsewhere? Like, we can.
We do a set for many years.
Exactly.
Uh, I I love the downtown vibe.
Right.
Uh, you know.
Well, I think, you know, from our standpoint, it's like we want to get the businesses involved, but. After doing this for three years, maybe we take it upon ourselves too, and we need to go talk to businesses and make sure. This is actually something they want to continue to participate in. Are they getting burned out? You know, because I kept, we did surveys on Seventh Street that said. They were getting burned out as well, um, you know, I think it's important to. Kind of get feedback from all parties involved and not just assume one way or the other.
I think Tim's question is a great one, um, I think maybe we'll say next year, we should really be looking at all trailers to downtown. Uh, as much as I love what I've seen. What I saw last year. Tracy, any final thoughts?
No, thank you.
All right, great, so any other discussion? We'll call please.
Um, did we have a, uh, no, we had a second. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yeah.
Mayor Bobby?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Tomlin?
Yes.
And Councilmember the Manayon?
Yes.
Good. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you, uh, next there was a request, uh, to, uh, for. X amount of. Funding, uh, to be, to be, uh, I think it's gonna be contingency fund. Uh, I will need a payment on that request.
I, um, uh, to contribute seven hundred and fifty dollars from the operation contingency fund. Uh, toward Trick or Treat Street. For the purchase of candy.
Do I hear a second? Moon and land, second, second, is there any other discussion? We'll call please.
Mayor Roddy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill? Mayor Person Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Blue and Layon?
Yes.
Councilmember Laritson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Uh, thank you guys for what you do, um, I, you know, I feel like we need to work closely with you guys on. On is there a way to augment what we're doing this year to make sure you're successful?
And I think it would be, uh. Nice to get some input from both of y'all's department on. Um, generally what time does the fatigue start setting in, just kind of get a feel for it so we know around when. What, what things we have to space out and what's gonna be more straight down and what not to be as straight down.
Well, for me, it was about fifteen in a row.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, thank you all. Uh, at this time, you, you entertain, uh, any, uh, comments from the public on any area? Whether on the agenda or not. Anybody like to speak, speak, please?
My name's Sue Preston, actually, the one thirty-one, you said, Street, just went down to twelve, so. I'll be looking at that twelve number. Okay, um, other than. What I guess. Is a lack of following procedure in letting me speak. Um. A lot of my hand was raised before a vote. And, um. Our county attorney, uh, city magistrate's instructions mean to bring an issue up to city council. Uh, and, um. What was the third issue? Oh, um, this is, uh. Our tenants' comment about the. Voting in bullies. Um, I have to focus on a different thing. This is a newspaper from, uh, Friday, Denver paper from Friday, September first. Um, to get us the trip to the paper now, hard copy is one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars a year. Um, there's an article in here. Um. The, the, the title, subtitle at the top, I won't mention because, uh. They'll be taking it, I'm making a statement like this, but the title is, uh, U S election workers receive threats warnings. The Justice Department created the Election Threats Task Force in two thousand twenty-one led by its Public Integrity Section. Which investigates election crime. Um, and that's, next sentence talks about prosecutions of, of those people threatening election murder. But I think this should generally apply to, um, to everybody in this forum. This isn't going to be a taken lightly, it's not going to be trivialized, he said. Federal judges and courts are taking this conflict seriously and the punishment is gonna be measured to the seriousness of the conflict. Um. My perception is that. Um, the city has recently acted, is sworn. And using a fucking line of nineteen seventy, so I guess so, one minute of wire, two minutes and a half.
Uh, two minutes and eleven seconds.
Sorry, if they're corrected, all right.
Um. Nineteen seventy, second of wire in the college dictionary. The second edition of sworn is to incite or investigate to an evil act. Especially a criminal act. I think the circumstances which occurred, um. Following Friday and. Um, unfortunately today, um, that applies. And I guess I have to write some motions up and, and talk to the district attorney and state, who said, well, thank you kindly.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak to city council on any item though? Please. But anybody answered? Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, at this time, we're quick there before, uh, uh, you guys know to visit Alhies or, or Twinn. Twinn Town in Ireland, it was, uh, it was a delightful visit, but it was also very beautiful, I, I, I spent a good amount of time, uh. Talking about and seeing the history. Of Ireland, which, you know, unlike ours, goes back thousands of years. So that was fascinating and, uh, but, but just the people, they were delightful, I loved the visit, three of them will be coming here. Uh, weekend after this coming weekend, um, uh, for the Irish Memorial Dedication. Uh, and thinking of the Irish Memorial Dedication, we have done a confirmation, there may be some dignitaries. Uh, attending that, uh, I'm gonna find out more tomorrow, uh, about who that might be. But nonetheless, uh, it's turning into. Um, even a bigger deal than I, than I expected, I expected there to be a lot of attention from the Irish, but there's also a lot of attention. You know, from state officials, so, uh, and we'll see what happens with that, but I, I'm looking forward to that event, uh. I think it's meaningful for us as a community and certainly meaningful to the Irish government, um. I, I, I think I, the, the Minister of Justice and the Irish Council General visited last Wednesday. And Lori and I took them to lunch and then they went out to the memorial, they wanted to see the memorial site, so, uh. There's a, there's a lot going on with that and, um, you know, I'm proud of our Irish community, especially, uh, Luke and Catherine. Uh, for working so hard to make this happen. That's it for me. Count report.
One, some of the news, um, that. Uh, project I was speaking about, um, earlier in the year for the C N U, both for the D L M Union Trailer, um, area of the Family Dollar. Um, has officially ended unfortunately, um, but that room was set for August thirty-first, it was. Surprise to me if a person who was trying to get you to sign up, I've been given much of an opportunity to build that relationship.
Was for roof, roof replacements or?
Uh, it's for weatherizing the trailer homes, bringing, uh. It is significantly valued to the homes, including the battery and heat pump. Uh, both of which are tremendous for energy efficiency, um, in homes and given the state of a lot of these trailers. And the lack of regulations they had when they were built, they're much needed. Um, not to say that they have any more nowadays, to be honest, but.
Christian, sorry, question on that, is that separate from the electrification project that, uh, the minds? Um, professor was trying to coordinate?
Same thing.
It's the same, so that was dead?
Uh, it's. They're not processing any applications, we're kind of waiting for a response to the person that I was supposed to be in connection with. Just happened to be going on vacation towards the deadline for some odd reason. Um, so I'm not even sure if the last few applications I got in were properly processed before that, but. My understanding is that they are no longer taking applications and they're gonna start moving forward with the. Um, rest of the project, uh. It expanded outside, um, actually to our, uh, I think it was called M and J Villa, um, Trailer Park Area, which is the one on Monroe. Uh, okay, yeah. So, uh, I did door knocking there, I did, um, some door knocking, a few houses in town, there was one outside of a general trailer park area that. Was interested in the program, total of eighteen-ish units, so they, they're gonna benefit from this program, which is good.
That's great.
Um, but it's below what their expectancy was, but, I mean, they also didn't really speak to us about what would be realistic given their strict standards. Um, as well as their immigrant, um. Uh, standard and, uh, regulations on who can and cannot apply based on legal status.
Correct.
So, uh, good and bad news, good news that eighteen is still eighteen and that's eighteen units of affordable homes that are going to be. Positively impacted and going to be expecting a significantly lower, um. Significantly lower amount of utility goes in upcoming years, this project probably won't start until next year, uh, the construction of it, from my understanding, because. Obviously, we're still in there already, and it'd be kind of crazy to coordinate that, but. Um, I mean, all things considered for the short turnaround that I had at least personally, it. Huge success, I personally got five people onto the program. So I would consider that a success for the short time period that we were able to go through this program. Um, I'll be able to get more updates and more learn through what their processes are, but. Um, at the, at this time, that's where we're at and I think it's something that maybe we can look to duplicate. Um, and maybe de- or strict units off of, um, if it works out well, um, you know, a lot of our homes need utility. Upgrades to be livable and it would be interesting to see that we're gonna live under the Regional Housing Authority. Um, so that's something that I'll have in mind going forward and be presenting to the Regional Housing Authority.
This program specifically targeted mobile homes.
Yes, um, and it obviously didn't have any, uh. It didn't have any deed restrictions since it was a state and federal program, um, and it was mostly done for research purposes. Uh, what they wanted to do is see if they focused on one area, one specific area, if they would have success with, um. Higher energy savings, which in turn means, uh, more energy efficient and less polluting communities.
You know, for homes though, there's also the care program.
Yes.
If you're a widow, and so that's a, that's a pretty, pretty good program.
But the fundings are for those other programs like the weatherization program and the care program, um, and for assistance leave are still very limited. And can limit on how much this does, this is a complete, like, this is an. Unduplicable, um, unless there's some heavy benefit program, like this is once in a lifetime for a community type program for having those benefits, so. I mean, it is what it is, and again, I, I would love to be able to recreate this at large for, as an at-large program for people who already own their homes, who may be. Looking for some of those upgrades themselves, um, through the Regional Housing Authority, so we can de- or strict those units. Um, it would be a great and money efficient way to get some more, um, affordable homes, uh, secure for our community. Um, additionally for any, um. Other potential dots around that space, I think it'd be great.
Like, that was, that is pretty good news. Anybody else who knew the council report?
But I'd love to see the city get, um, maybe a little bit more proactively involved in the whole swimming pool issue. P B Swims was encouraged by us, I think, over the ballot measure. Didn't make the mark for a whole number of reasons, but I think if we could get together with P B Swims and the county, potentially the school. And start to have some meetings now, maybe a year from now, we could have something ready to put forward to the voters.
Lori has some great thoughts on that, um, and, and, you know, she's moving in that direction if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I'd like to have something ready for the next ballot. For, not this November, but next November.
Yeah, yeah, next, next year. I think it'll take a year to get everybody on the same page and come up with a cohesive plan.
But not specifically a swimming pool, but rather a rec district, um. Ballot, which is absolute.
Yeah, I think so, and I think, I know P B Swims wants it to be focused primarily on a pool, but I think that there are some. Big negatives to putting all your money in a pool, it.
Agreed.
It, it is that it doesn't, you know, we found that you're stuck with whatever ballot language you have, so you have to write broadly enough that you use the money for whatever purpose. Regardless of how it came out, and we all understand the purpose for that to be a pool, but there's also other. Recreation needs, and so my feeling is that. It should be a recreation tax with certain percentages allocated to certain buckets.
Uh, so if we go down that road, this, this should be a city-county joint initiative in language. On the ballot, and the county would like to go that direction, I don't know. When we'll be ready for that, but, uh, but I'm, I'm actually hopeful about it.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Thomas, I think, and I'm talking specifically about a pool, although I suppose you could talk about. Like a rec center, but like a pool is an indoor public space, much like the library. It's like we don't put a community center with it, and as such, I think that the city and the county have. Um, a reason to, to contribute to that and to help develop that. Um, I do stumble a little bit over the twenty-five years down the line, we'll have a rec center versus where they have an entire generation who gets. Uh, does not have the opportunity to learn how to swim, um, and I know I differ from other, some people on, on their opinions of how to approach that, but. I do think that the city and the county have a role to play in, in, uh. Either creating or revitalizing yet another indoor public space that we need.
I think we need a book session. I think we could need a little bit more than just.
Uh, I'm sorry, you cut out for a second, you said, I think we need, I think we need a drink session.
I think we will. Candies.
Yeah, but I think that, uh, I, Councilor Thomas, you and I can talk about maybe trying to get all those people together in a meeting sometime soon to start the discussions, but yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
I mean, or, so, I mean, this brings another question. When are we gonna have subcommittees? I know we're all homeless here, but like, of, of three people, you know, up to, we can't have three.
Right.
Uh, of two people for like these special projects that.
I think that's a good idea, it's, it's, it's an idea that I shied away from, uh, because we've had a working city council. Um, and, and I don't see that really necessarily changing anytime soon, but, but I. You're right, we, we should, we should have some, some focus groups within the city council that are working on things that they bring back to city council, it's just a matter of time and that.
Yeah, and, and I mean, a good example of this is, uh, Tim and I are both on the Regional Housing Authority, in a way, that's. Uh, subcommittee of sorts, right, um, so I imagine it could work similarly for. Um, rec in general or whatever other passions the city, well, outside large has, and it doesn't have to be formal reports, but just like a, like, hey. We'll take on this, you guys.
We, we do talk about what is city council willing to do in terms of, of committees outside of the city now. And, uh, that's what it boils down to really is, is what, what can, what, what can it look like for involvement? Uh, by city council and, uh. Not, I'm, I'm happy to assign, yeah, uh, boards and. Yeah.
And hopefully, I mean, of course, with the budget increase of, um, council members individually, hopefully that will become a little bit easier, more attainable. Than two thousand we have allocated already, but, um, of course, it, it isn't gonna supplement a need for a full-time job, but it will. Hopefully be able to, you know, make it a little bit easier to take a little less hours.
All right, thank you. Any other council report, Tracy, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, in which case, the public meetings planner is up?
We don't have one this week.
Oh, we don't. Yeah. We take a little off. Uh, community dinner is this, uh, this Saturday at three o'clock. Um, a lot of work between now and then to get ready, but it's okay, we have all the, we have all the pieces in place, uh. And my, and my type fitness is, is, is leading, I said, they have every year for the last three years, uh, sixty tables and five home chairs. And they deliver them and they, they, they bring them there, we have to help by one of them and then they come to pick them up and we help with them. I'm making those rules now, so, uh, that's looking pretty good, we can have that as the Irish Memorial. And then the Irish Memorial is at ten, probably from ten to twelve, then there's the Irish Practice Parade at three. And then there's, uh, I forget what, what is it, the thing that K R I has called to something, uh, event that's gonna happen that evening. Um, so all, that's a, that's a, you know, a, a, a big day, the Healy House has their display and it starts on the fifteenth, the day before. Uh, and that's gonna be about the, the Irish Diastra. Um, when I talked to Jim Walsh today, he's coming, this coming weekend, helps send that. And so, there's a lot going on. Harvest dinner on the twenty-second, uh, the C board, um, and the Main Street auction on the thirtieth. September is not slowing down much.
We have a work session next week, I'm sure, Tim rentals?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a work session.
I, I didn't want that one, I've been asking for it, but it was like months ago since I asked for that.
Yeah.
I just forgot about this.
Yeah, I should have, we should have, I should have had that in my report, yes.
Anybody else see the changes or additions or suggestions to the, the planner?
Could we just preemptively schedule out work sessions on the twenty-fourth and thirty-first?
No, no, all right. Have it in mind, and I have, but we already, we already have one on the twenty-fourth, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it is. I guess we.
Oh, you're you're talking about October.
Oh, I see, yeah, that's what I'm saying, and should we just add that to the calendar already to pledge our sessions?
At eight thirteen, this city council is.